My neighbors and from my neighborhood. And, let's see, I lost my... And, just to kind of reiterate, Chattanooga has plenty of Airbnbs and I don't want one in my, in my block or in my neighborhood. So, I know there are also some on the map that was shown earlier off of 31st Street. And, my experience with those is that I kind of, I miss the, the lack of people consistently in those properties, missed the lack of those neighbors personally. So, that's my personal experience with three of the Airbnb's in my neighborhood. Thank you for letting me share.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I, okay.
You should have the floor.
Uh, okay. Uh, young lady, would you please come forward, please? So, you said, how long, how long has this property been in possession of the current owner?
Um, so Jim Stevens has owned it since July 2012.
July 2012?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, it, it has not been occupied at all since that time?
It's been a long-term rental. It's an investment property.
Okay. So, it was a long-term rental and there are some issues that where it hadn't been any inspection of the property or the, the building?
So, the tenants moved out of the property, um, probably over the summer, um, their lease ended and so they ended up not to renew it. And, at that point, we decided to look into short-term rental and we realized that the area fell into 36th Street. Um, so at that time, we started moving forward with doing the renovations on the property. It took a little bit of time just because the property needed significant work to bring it back up. Um, and from then, uh, we started the application process and we had the code inspector come in, um, and he reviewed it once and told us there needed to be some windows replaced, there needed to be some larger cost items that needed to be done. Um, so at that point, I stopped it because we received this notice for, um, for the opposition. So, we, he hasn't come back in since the first time he's come in, um, and inspected the property.
Okay. I have a, a concern when applicants come before me and they haven't done their due diligence with particularly the property inspection because there is not a guarantee from my perspective that due diligence is going to be done to make sure that this property is up to standard to be rented or even to be lived in. So, uh, without beleaguering the point, uh, I'm going to have to deny the request. So, counsel, I move to deny.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to deny and a second. Any questions? All in favor of the denial with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I will yield back.
Do the next.
Do the next. Okay, okay. All right. Madam Chair, uh, if you would, 7D.
A resolution authorizing administrative for the Department of Public Works to award contract number R-18004201 to PNC Construction Inc., Chattanooga, Tennessee. This grammar interacted streetscape on 1st Street in the amount of $833,106.55 plus a contingency amount of $83,500 for a total project cost in the amount of $916,606.55.
Chairman, I'll speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair. This is a, a great project. Since we've last, uh, discussed this, I've done some more, uh, research on, uh, how, uh, important this project can be for this, uh, the downtown area and how it relates to how it's going to be a benefit to our community because that's what it's all about. Uh, it's going to link, uh, up towards the Walnut Commons area, the Ed Johnson area, as well as the renovations that's soon to be done on the Walnut Street Bridge. So, with that being said, I move to approve.
Councilman Ledford?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with a second. Any questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Motion carries. Okay. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'll yield back the floor, the chair to you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
That, that concludes this part of our, uh, city council meeting. We'll now move on to purchases.
Good evening, members of council. We have a few items of purchase for your review and consideration. First item being from the mayor's office, a new blanket contract for bottled water and filtration system coolers with accessories, being awarded to DS Services of America Incorporated for a total estimated annual amount of $40,000. The next item from the Department of Youth and Family Development, an extended blanket contract to, for Enterprise Rent-A-Car, being awarded to Enterprise Rent-A-Car for a total estimated amount of $5,000. The remaining purchases are from the Department of Public Works. From the Waste Resource Division, a new blanket contract for liquid sodium hypochlorite, being awarded to Olin Chlor Alkali Products and Vinyls for a total estimated annual amount of $4,250,000. The next, a new blanket contract for sewer line cleaning services, being awarded to Sweeping Corporation of America for a total estimated annual amount of $600,000. The next item is a purchase and there's, uh, a correction to what's posted on your report. It states refurbished compactor, but they are parts, purchasing parts to refurbish a compactor at the influence pump station, being awarded to Guthrie Sales and Service for a total cost of $26,430. The next item is a blanket contract renewal for air vacuum relief valve maintenance and support, being awarded to H&amp;H Brown Incorporated for a total estimated annual amount of $250,000. The next is a blanket contract renewal for valve actuator services, being awarded to Industrial Valve Sales and Service Incorporated for a total estimated amount of $200,000. Next is a blanket contract renewal for raising and lowering manhole services, awarded to Maze Construction and Engineering Company for a total estimated annual amount of $150,000. And that was the last.
Thank you, Tony. Eddie, what's your pleasure?
Move for approval.
It's been moved and properly seconded for approval. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Opposed is nay? Motion carries on approval of the purchases.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, we'll move on to other businesses. Is there any other business the council would like to share this evening? Let's go with Councilman Byrd.
Thank you so much, Chair. I wanted to share an update that has been a hot topic in District 8. There has been a lot of social media chatter on the closing of the powerhouse facility. This is not true. The city has been working with the Chattanooga Zoo on a four-part expansion plan for their new Africa exhibit. Phase one will include giraffes and each phase will bring an exciting new animal for the Africa exhibit. Part of this phase four, under the new Africa exhibit, means relocating, not shutting down the powerhouse and UTC softball hitting facility. The zoo has explained to city staff that the phase would not be, would not begin until at least 2025, meaning there is no immediate danger of closing either facility. But, city staff continues to look for opportunities in the surrounding areas to best provide this needed service for Chattanoogaans. I'll continue to share updates about the exciting new exhibit for our community and the exciting future for the powerhouse. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update, Councilman Byrd. Is there any other council member that would like to share any other business? Seeing none, we will now move on to committee reports. Councilwoman Byrd?
No report.
Councilman Byrd?
No report.
Councilwoman Kumra?
No report.
Councilman Gilbert?
No report.
Vice Chairman Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the Legislative Committee did meet today in our strategic planning time at 1:30. We didn't quite get finished with our business, so I'm going to request that next week it be placed at the top of the agenda so that we can discuss, uh, our strategic planning time.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So noted.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Ledford? Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did have a Public Works and Transportation Committee meeting today where we had a, an update from car design of their system as well as some information about our, our city-owned golf courses and the regular agenda items. And, we will have another one in two weeks after agenda session.
Thank you very much, Councilman Mitchell. Councilman Smith?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Now is the time in our meeting to recognize person wishing to address the council. Mr. City Attorney, would you please read the rules?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
At the end of each council meeting, the chair can recognize members of the public that wish to address the council. Here's your rules. Each speaker wishing to address the council can be recognized at the microphone up front for that purpose. No person shall have more than three minutes to speak. The speaker can address the council only upon matters within their legislative and quasi-judicial authority and can't address the council on matters which are under the authority of other governmental bodies or agencies. A speaker cannot use any vulgar or obscene language nor use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others, direct your comments to the council as a whole and not make comments towards individual council members. And, you can only do so one time a day, but go ahead, sir.
My name is Earl Friedenberg and I live at 603 Stardust Trail in the Northwoods subdivision. Is it all right, Mr. Chairman, if I ask residents to stand up? I think we have a delegation here. Would everybody from Northwoods please stand up? Thank you. Chairman Oglesby, Vice Chairman Henderson and members of the council. Northwoods subdivision residents are here tonight asking why a 30-year-old father had to die to get our attention. A two-year-old will never see her daddy. This was a senseless murder at a group home on Sunday, January the 12th at 5705 Garrett Drive. Our neighborhood association voted unanimously last night to oppose the reopening of this group home. Frankly, it's been a nuisance from almost day one. It's operated by Support Solutions, headquartered in Memphis. We are told they operate other group homes in Chattanooga. Since the opening in November 2017, police have responded to the facility 43 times. I asked an officer how much time they spend going into Northwoods. They said they average two times a month. So, you see, this house has gotten quite a bit of police attention. This afternoon, when I was coming back from lunch, I noticed a big moving van sitting in front of the house and there were workers moving out furniture. Caught my eye. Yes, we call the news media because it is news. A few minutes ago, before the meeting, Ms. Phyllis Miller, Phyllis, would you please stand up? She lives in the V there across from the house. She brought us a good news letter. It's from Richard Key, who handles the Key Estate. The bottom line is, the lease has run out, the house is going to be put on the market and sold and it will return to its proper zoning of R1. Members of the council, I supplied you with a letter, gives you a lot of background in the case. I've known the Key family for a long time. They're good citizens. There was some mistakes here made and we're just glad that Northwoods has a good resolution. But, I do challenge members of the city council. This group, Support Solutions, in my opinion, is a bad citizen. You know, allowing a murder to happen when this guy requested additional help last December is unacceptable in my eyes. I would request, Mr. Smith, since you're our councilman, that you write these people a letter, maybe get them to come over here and answer questions. Now, I know Mr. Noblet has made a statement that you have very little jurisdiction, but they're still operating in our community. Talk with the policeman, ask how many times they've been to these group homes. In my opinion, there's a lot of information that we need to know about. Let's prevent, please, another murder from happening like what happened at the Northwoods subdivision. Thank you so much for allowing me to address you. If you have any questions from our neighborhood, we have neighbors, Mr. Gene Huffin, our chairman of our association, is here. We would be glad to ask those questions, you answer, ask those questions and answer them, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, we have, uh, Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
There's been a lot of discussion over this since, uh, this incident occurred, uh, on the 12th and I have had significant conversations with the city attorney and what exactly our authority is, uh, with a company that is actually licensed by the state, uh, and not by the city. Uh, so there's, there's very little, uh, audit capability legally that we can do. That said, uh, looking into other businesses that they have and looking into whether or not they are operating in a legal fashion is something we definitely can do, uh, even if that is, if they're regulated by the state. We have a few friends up there too that may be willing to help us out and having somebody go in and check these facilities out. Uh, I'm glad to hear the outcome on this one. I've been hearing rumors, so we've been pushing pretty hard, so I'm glad to hear that that has taken place.
And, Mr. Key has apologized, by the way. You've got the letters there. He's issued an apology. He says that he will forever remember this and it will be something that will annoy him. So, I wanted you to see that.
And, we, we appreciate his willingness to work with the neighborhood as well. Uh, I will say this, on the police reports, I have looked into those too. Not every time that an officer is called to a home such as this is it in a, in a violent nature. In some cases, there's a lot of calls that are, that are helpful in nature as well. So, uh, I will just say that just because there are calls to a home, it doesn't necessarily immediately trip the sensor that, oh, my gosh, you know, there, there, um, either criminal activities or things like that going on. It's not necessarily that. Um, so, we are happy to see this outcome and, um, we are going to look into this organization and the other businesses they do in the, in the city.
Well, our neighborhood has been scared. Some say they fear for their lives.
I understand that.
So, I appreciate you listening to our concern.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
And, once again, thank you for your comments, sir.
Hi, I'm Stephen Russell, District 3. I'm a city of Chattanooga employee and I'm with the SEIE Local 205. Fight for Fifteeners, please stand up. Uh, we've come to you this evening, uh, with support from many labor unions and community groups, including the Chattanooga Area Labor Council and Chattanooga in Action for Love, Equity and Benevolence, also known as Caleb. Yesterday, we marched with many groups in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. We thought that it was lit, a fitting to continue his message of social and economic justice by attending the march and getting further public support to make Fight for Fifteen the new minimum standard for wages paid at the city of Chattanooga. According to data cited in the 423 newsletter posted by the city, over one in five Chattanoogaans live in poverty. In Hamilton County, the living wage per hour needed to support a household with one adult and one child is $21.91. I'm saddened to report that we have fallen way behind. The cost of living has increased substantially, but our wages have not increased at the same rate. In an effort to attract businesses to our state, Tennessee officials sell the fact that we pay the federal minimum wage of 7.25 per hour and they have blocked efforts for cities to increase the minimum wage for private sector workers. During, during the budget season, it's important to remind that Dr. King said that a, a budget is not only a financial document, but also a moral document. And, and we have to strive for this Fight for Fifteen per hour and that will solve this moral, will have, go far in solving our moral dilemma. As our city grows and we continue to hand out taxpayer money to large companies, we must never forget employees that keep this city running. We must pass a moral budget and make the Fight for Fifteen the top priority for ending poverty for city of Chattanooga workers. As one of the largest employers in our area, we, this will encourage other employers to increase wages and lift thousands of people out of poverty. And, we must, we must do this sooner rather than later. I, I want to thank the Mayor Burke for his leadership in bringing awareness to economic mobility and I hope we can, uh, work to make Chattanooga a great place to live and work. And, again, I'd thank for our friends and, uh, citizens of Chattanooga, thank the unions and thank Caleb for, for showing up and supporting us. And, we look forward to working with you to increase wages and, and improve the lives of Chattanoogaans. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Chanley Caldwell. Um, I just had a question about, uh, the moratorium for the dockless electric scooters and bicycles. Um, just to clarify, and this is, I believe this is part of the original ordinance, but this, this only refers to, uh, commercial shared systems, correct? Not private ownership? Yes, sir, that's right. Okay. That's good to know. Um, also, it was originally extended for six months, um, and then, and then voted into effect again or I, I was curious what the original limit was?
Wait a minute, uh, would you like to address this? Otherwise, it could be done.
I'll press it there quickly.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry.
You have the mic.
Thank you. This is an item we'll be discussing next week, so we'll go into a little bit more detail.
Okay.
Uh, but yes, it was set up as with a six-month and as that moratorium has run out and ordinance is being introduced to further extend it.
Okay. I was just, okay. Well, I, I'll follow up.
Um, yeah. That'd be great. And, later or next week is great. I'll be happy to spend as much time as you want.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smith.
Marie Mont Oak Grove. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. stated that what does it profit a man to be able to eat at an integrated lunch counter if he does not have enough money for a hamburger? Last week, uh, there was particular discussion during their purchasing portion that I took some notes on that I wanted to, uh, bring to the light of the community. And, around 27 minutes, if you go and look at the city council video, we have Councilwoman Byrd, who states that, "Why does it seem that business in the city of Chattanooga is operating as a closed shop?" In my particular surprise, I didn't even understand that the city council had adopted a purchasing manual that it doesn't seem to have quite fully developed. 29 minutes in, she says, "It's bad practice. It reeks of small-town thinking and we should have a committee review." 29 minutes and 31 seconds, something doesn't feel right. We're talking about millions of dollars and nobody else gets a chance. We are a different city now. And then, Councilman Mitchell, at 32 minutes states, "We've done a terrible job of implementing and pu, and putting this into our contracts." I stand here, um, on behalf of the community in solidarity with our union brothers and sisters and with the general public. When we talk about equity, it must be legitimate. When you talk about leveling the playing field, what you're talking about is the fact that in 1911, the city of Chattanooga had an ordinance which forced segregation in Jim Crow in this city. Jim Crow was legal. The remnants of Jim Crow are an uneven playing field that do not have leverage for people who are entrepreneurs, who have great ideas and innovation tactics, to be able to be able to compete and have their opportunity at doing business with the city of Chattanooga. Also, a Jim Crowism is also having people who work to make a city what it is and cannot get fair wages. As a matter of fact, Dr. Martin Luther King died going to address the sanitation workers in Memphis because they were on strike in the 60s for not being par, paid fair wages. If we're going to talk about equity, it must be legitimate and that means it must come with the implementation from the city government, as well as an agreeance, not only from the legislative body, but also the executive, and collaboration on making sure the implementation, as far as the process is concerned, is open when it can be, available to the public, explained and legitimate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mont.
I live in District 2, uh, 1,001 Meadow Lake Road and I'm here to offer a few statements in opposition of what appears to be an impending ban on dockless electric scooters. First off, the city of Chattanooga has expended considerable resources and undergone a severe amount of criticism for putting in place infrastructure that was supposed to support choices in transportation. Specifically, I'm talking about bike lanes. Frequently, we hear complaints about how these bike lanes are not being used, yet the city would seek to ban the vehicles that could use these bike lanes and actually make better use of them, more efficient use of them. Secondly, the development community in this city has made an apparent big bet, a large bet on the south side. They have bet that millennials are going to move back into the cities and that they're going to live there and presumably, they'll want to patronize businesses that are within their reach. By denying them transportation choice with electric scooters, you're forcing them into vehicles which now have to find a place to park, which now clog up the roads even more for the suburban commuters who want to come into town and which make basically a, a more inefficient situation, uh, which we would have, otherwise have if we allowed electric scooters to be in existence in this town. Finally, once again, the downtown businesses can use all the help they can get in getting customers. And, when customers are forced to park at large distances from the businesses and pay for that parking, then they are at a disadvantage relative to these suburban locations that have huge expanses of parking available to them. In my opinion, I think the, uh, city owes it to our downtown residents and businesses to provide choices in transportation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm Eric Atkins and I'm from Bozantown. Those of you who don't know us in District 8, it is. And, I wasn't going to say anything today, but I would be remiss if I didn't say that we are both appreciative and thankful. On behalf of our chairman and our vice chairman and the whole body of the Unity Group, we are appreciative and thankful to the city of Chattanooga, Office of Multicultural Affairs and everybody that had a role in helping us have the 50th Annual MLK March. We are one of the oldest and longest and most continuous in the country and I think by the display that we had yesterday, the community was in agreement. And, so, we should be proud of that fact that we've been doing this for this many years. And, we know, I heard a lot about Dr. King here, we know that he was a victim of gun violence. And, we know that in this country, 36,000 people will die each year to gun violence. That's 100 every day. And, one reason is because we have 370 million guns on the streets of America. Now, that's enough for every man, woman, child, moose, bird and fish in the country. And, so, we must be doing something, teaching about responsible gun safety and ownership and changing the hearts and attitudes and minds of people. And, Ms. Williams was at one of our events when we talked about God, Universe, Nature, that's the acronym for gun, the dream to end gun violence. And, we know that there's more that needs to be done and many of us have called that Walmart corporate hotline because we will expect more to be done. And, let me finally say that from the city of Chattanooga standpoint, this is also the 50th anniversary of the Unity Group too. And, when we do be critical, it be in love because we are a social justice organization and we must be committed to justice and we must be committed to righting the ship as we see it. And, this is just a wonderful opportunity we have to advance our country forward. That's sort of what Dr. King talked about. And, Langston Hughes described it when he said, "Hold fast to dreams because if dreams die, life is a broken-winged bird that can't fly." Hold fast to dreams because if dreams go, life is like a field frozen in the snow. So, we must teach our young people to hold fast to dreams and change their hearts and their attitudes and their minds. And, we also stand by the workers because they deserve dignity and respect in a liberal way. That's something that Dr. King died. That's something else Dr. King died for, too, two sanitation workers that got crushed to death trying to get out of the cold rain. And so again, say that Chattanooga, we say thank you, and let's look forward to the 51st year.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hello, my name is Zoe Grimes. I live at 747 Commons Boulevard. I'm in District Four, and I'm also here to talk about the dockless scooters and bicycles. I am one of those Gen Z millennials that the last gentleman up here was speaking about. And I was at home when I first saw a news article saying that there was, in fact, a ban on those for six months, and it shocked me. I was like, what? Chattanooga has got the electric buses, we've got the forefront of innovation, and we've banned scooters and bicycles. You know, I went to school in New York City, so I'm very familiar with the electric bikes going every which way. And when I saw that it was up for consideration again, I knew I had to come down. I was reading a lot about statistics about the dockless scooters, and there are, of course, dangers of injuries. A lot of them are head injuries. I think something like 80% of injuries involved in people on scooters are from falls, and a great deal for people who are not on the scooters from collisions. But I don't think we should ban them. I think we should instead pursue creative regulations, something like, you know, making sure that they can't go above certain speeds, making sure people understand the importance of helmets. A lot of these injuries that are sustained, that are very impactful, are because people aren't wearing helmets. You know, you're going 10, 20 miles on a, on a vehicle, and you don't have a helmet on. We've already concluded that's a pretty bad idea. Aside the point, I really appreciate living in Chattanooga, all the effort Chattanooga is making to make it a more friendly place to not have a car. I drive a motorcycle, so I'm one of the people who don't have a car. Cars are expensive for young people like me to own, they're expensive to keep, and they're expensive to park, so I chose to drive a motorcycle instead. And I really appreciate that Chattanooga puts a lot of effort into making bus systems. I came here on the bus today, in fact, because it was freezing cold outside. I'm not going to drive this motorcycle. What I think Chattanooga should be doing is not looking for ways to exclude carless solutions, but should instead be looking for ways to embrace carless solutions, especially with new technology like this. Thank you all very much for listening to me ramble about this. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
My name is Brenda Ben. I'm with the Hebecker Community Park Project. I came to you all back in October to let you all know what we were about to do at 1820 Citico Avenue, new on the corner of Orchard Knob and Citico in the Avondale Community and the Churchillville Community, the community that's being revitalized, that reformed. I came to you all and asked you because we wanted to also have the property at 1818 Citico, so we can make the Hebecker Community Park even bigger and better. That was back in October. We did what we were supposed to do. We went to the planning and development, we talked to Ms. Williams, we submitted all the necessary forms, but here it is in January, and we still don't know the status of our request, which is stalling our project, because we need to know if we're going to have that property or not, so we'll know if we need to replan, or regroup, or go on with our original plan. We've also contacted the mayor's office and sent them a proposal. We've also contacted Commissioner Mackey. I'm told that he owns the property adjacent to 1818 Citico. We still have not had a response. So I just came to you all again. I came to you all before for your support and for your help in any way you could, so I'm coming to you again for that support and help in helping us get at least a response to our request, so we can go on with this great project that we are about to do in that neighborhood. Thank you all again for listening.
Thank you very much. Councilman Byrd.
Thank you, ma'am. Excuse me. Here I am. Okay. Thank you so much. This project means a lot to me as well, and I know the work you've put into it. If you would, I know the HH Wright Parkway, the part that, naming the street after Mr. Wright, has been put into motion, so we should be hearing from that really soon. And if you will hang out after the meeting, me and Ms. Donna will talk to you and let you know where we are with the property transfer and where that is at this time as well, okay? Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? I want to thank you all for coming out this cold evening and participating in your government. We are now adjourned.